Excellent, okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting of October 30th, 2024. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Just a couple of good announcements. One is Councilman Porella will not be here tonight. She had knee surgery, so she'll be able to, we have a couple of parades in town. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, so she's looking forward to do those a little bit easier in the future. The other thing is there is voting coming up on Tuesday. So whatever you stand for, whoever you like, whatever questions you like or don't like, get out and vote, please. It is so very important. The clerk likes to walk around with a shirt on that says something like that, so.
I have my button on today.
Outstanding. So, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes. This is the Town Council meeting minutes of October 9, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item of business is C1. This is ordinance number 2024-18, Chapter 16, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 9, Residential Parking, Section 16, 345. This is designated residential parking streets, and this is to include additional no overnight parking, first reading.
I move this constitutes first reading.
Second. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D1. This is Joseph Denise from the VFW 850 Hope Street, and this is a request for bingo license for the second Thursday of every month through March 13, 2025, from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m.
Based on the recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion?
Yes, if I may, just briefly, because we normally make reference to based on the recommendations, and I think it's important for folks to know that we do get recommendations from the police, from the fire, from the various department heads that weigh in and provide the information for us to make an informed decision, so.
Thank you for making that. That's, it's a great point, and I often say it, and so do my colleagues, that it seems like we go through some of these agenda items very quickly. That's part of the reason why, is that they're ready for frontline, if you will. They come in front of us and they've been vetted. Now ultimately, it is the council's final decision on whether or not it gets approved, but we weigh heavily on departments and the administrator. So, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Any other discussion?
No.
Well said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item of business is D2. This is Paula Morissette, 21, Lisa Lane, and this is in regards to a one-day dancing and entertainment license for the James D. Riley Foundation Santa House Opening Day Party on Saturday, November 23rd, from 4:00 to 6:30 at the Town Common. I believe Paula is here.
Paula?
Three minute.
Before you speak, may I have, is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve it based on the recommendations.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Discussion? Paula, floor is yours.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank everyone for their support of the Santa House, which will be magically appearing from the North Pole this weekend, so be on the lookout for it. This will be our first annual opening day party, and we thank you for your support of that.
That's great. Will you be needing volunteers this year, or?
We actually have sponsors that are going to actually help with the volunteering for the opening house, but we are looking for volunteers for our regular season, so we're all invited and welcome to join us.
Thank you.
So Paula, when, on the 23rd, from 4:00 to 6:30, when it magically appears, is that an opportunity? If I have a wish list that I would bring it on that day, is that?
I think you've been on the nice list.
Yes. You may be referencing the wrong list. But I appreciate that, though. Thank you.
Yeah, so we, it will be magically appearing this weekend, and the elves will be decorating, and then it'll be ready for the open house on the 23rd.
Outstanding.
Thank you again for your support.
Any other discussion from the council?
I hope I'm on the nice list, right?
Well, Mr. Chairman, maybe I changed my mind.
Any other discussion?
See you there, Paula. With three boys.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, wish the best. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F1. This is Laura Scarpino, 15 Gorham Place, and this is for consideration to add streetlights on Gorham Place and Sheffield Road. Laura did let me know she was not going to be able to appear and asked her dad David to appear for her.
Hello, Dad David.
Boy, that was a mistake, wasn't it?
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Scarpino, 932 Hope Street.
Thank you. So you may already know that we have a recommendation not to approve.
Correct.
Is that another way to deny?
Yes.
I'd like to take a moment to give the DBW Director Chris Porella and also Diane Williamson, we have it in front of us, but I'd like you to hear it and for the public to hear it. Chris, good evening.
Thank you. So when, basically, when we look at these streetlight requests, we consider a myriad of things, and from the public works perspective, typically, we would look at the type of area that is requesting the extra lights. Is it well lit? Is it, you know, are there anything, is there anything in the roadway that, you know, is an extra challenge to vehicles or pedestrians? Is it, are you able to negotiate the turns? What's the traffic level? What's the pedestrian level? In any event, contact the police department and ask about any issues that they may have had, which they have not had any. In this particular case, I just see no evidence of a need to add those. There is a cost to add them. This could be precedent setting, and it usually is. So if you look at this from a grid, it's not necessarily uniform, but I think the residential area is well lit, and I think there are a whole bunch of things to consider before granting them. So at this time, I would recommend that, that we do not do it.
Thank you, Chris. Diane, you also weighed in on it. Would you convey your thoughts?
I did, and I had a similar recommendation to Chris Porella's, Director Porella's. So I just gave you some information, the, you know, the comprehensive plan. We do have a, an action item in the plan to eventually have a dark sky ordinance, and so noting that, you know, we try to minimize the impacts of exterior lighting or excessive exterior lighting on existing residential neighborhoods. There's sometimes unintended adverse effects when lights go up in front of people's homes or near their homes. I did also note that while this is not a new, these are not new streets, the planning board's regulations require new streets to be spaced generally every 200 feet. With the existing streets and, rather with the existing lights and the proposed lights, they'd be spaced much, much closer than that. Just to kind of give you some context of things that we consider, as, as Chris mentioned.
Diane, can you give this council and the public a little bit of kind of perspective? What is 200 feet? Is that two light poles? Is that four light poles? Is that?
So this street is about, well, looking at Gorham Place, it's about, I'm going to say 600 feet long.
Okay.
So you'd be looking at, you know.
Four.
Right.
Got it. Okay.
Well, 600, you'd be looking at three, and there are already.
I'm on the bad list, so that's probably why, so.
Yeah, there's one on the corner of Hillside and Gorham, and then there's a couple mid-block. So, I mean, you're kind of, you're kind of where we would generally space them in a new development. That's how, you know, again, trying to minimize, you know, the adverse effect of excessive lighting in neighborhoods.
Okay. Anything else that you wanted to add?
Oh, no, I think that covers it.
Chief? I thought I saw the.
I did have Captain Wozni go through our CAD, our Computer Aided Dispatch, and our Records Management System to see if there were calls of service for any pedestrian accidents, issues with people walking, you know, in the roadway, and we were not able to locate neighborhood concerns, automobile accidents, and just prior to the meeting, before I opined on the matter, I have gone down on, this is my second night going down to inspect that neighborhood. I was just there less than an hour ago, half hour, 40 minutes ago, drove all through the neighborhood, spoke to a couple of the residents there, and it's unfortunate, Scarpino family are very nice people, but I concur with my fellow department heads that I do not see a public safety need for additional lighting in that area.
Thank you, Chief. So Dave, the reason why I wanted to do that first was not to stack the deck, was so you knew the, what was put in front of this council prior to the meeting and the justification for it, but.
No, I appreciate it, and Chief, being nice doesn't count for anything, but that's fine. But I appreciate the kind words. The reason, actually, Laura asked, if you look at Paul, Paul has, I think, four lights in the same, the same distance. Gorham has one. Yes, there are two on the ends, but those lights face east-west on Hillside and Sheffield, so they don't shed a lot of light north-south. That was the only reason, and the coyotes are alive and well in Silver Creek, and they come up in that area every night. So actually, if I can propose maybe something to consider, if you could just take a look at maybe replacing the light with something a little bit brighter, since it's the only one in the block, maybe it will spread a little bit better.
That seems like a reasonable thing that we can take a look at, so.
I appreciate it, and Laura appreciates it.
Of course.
And she's in Cancun, so.
It's very difficult to feel bad for her, right? She's got a nice dad for coming, so. So council, unless you disagree, we just need a motion to deny.
Any some recommendations? Make a motion to deny?
And actually, if, I'm sorry, I should have said a motion to deny, but also if we could look into, Chris, if we could look into the, if that's a, I don't believe they're adjustable. I believe they're on and off, but if there's an opportunity for brighter light in that area, that's something that we could consider, so. Thank you. That's a great point.
Perfect.
I heard that in your motion, Tim, right?
Yes.
Outstanding.
In a second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you all for your recommendations, too.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F2. This is Myra Page, 423 Hope Street, Unit K, and this is on behalf of the Friends of Linden Place, and this is in regards to bylaw modifications to Article 5, Section 3.
Hi, Myra. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Would you?
Myra Page, 423 Hope Street, and 80K, Rhode Island.
You beat me to it. So could you take a moment and explain what is, why you're in front of us tonight? What's being proposed? What's the, what is it currently and what's being proposed to a change?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to do so. So we were looking at our bylaws. We haven't done a comprehensive review of our bylaws, been doing them piece by piece, and this was a comprehensive review, and we realized that the, there was an issue with our situation with the Town Council, same situation also with the Historical Society and the Art Museum, although we're going to focus on the council, even though the issue is the same. When Linden Place was originally established, the bylaws said that those three entities would have a position as members of the board. They would elect somebody or appoint somebody on an annual basis to become members of our board, voting, regular voting members. When the organization was originally established, some of you, maybe all of you, are well aware that there was money put up by both the bond and by the town, and a lot of money, and we were a new organization. It made tons of sense. As we review our bylaws today, we're a substantial organization with strong financials, and here's the issue. So to be a member of the board, or, excuse me, to be a member of the organization and vote as a member of the organization, you need to be current with dues. To be a member of the Board of Directors, you need to be a member of the organization, and if you're not a member of the organization, then you're immediately dropped as a board member. So there are financial requirements to be a board member of the organization. In addition to that, and importantly, as we look for major funding from grants, one of the questions that the Rhode Island Foundation, the Champlin Fund, state and federal organizations ask is, do all of your board members contribute to the organization? Because of this, this particular situation, we have to answer that no. So it's a mechanical thing. We have no interest in you all having any less ability to say, hey, we want to come to your board meetings. We'd like to make some recommendations. We have some great ideas we'd like to share with you. We want all of that to stay in place, and so what we tried to do was to come up with a solution which would allow for the best of both worlds. We would really appreciate the Town Council having someone be elected or appointed as an advisor to our board on an annual basis. It would be fantastic to have that person show up at our board meetings, make contributions as they choose, and they would be members of the corporation or of the organization by default, by this particular structure. We wouldn't hold them to the same laws that our bylaws have held, and that's not a change in our bylaws. Our bylaws have always said that a member has to be a, pay, has to be a dues-paying member in order to vote. Always been in the bylaws. So we have a conflict we're trying to sort, to fix, and we believe that we can do this with the advisor request that we have made as a change. But let me ask you to, you undoubtedly have questions, and I want to be here to try and be as clear as possible to answer them.
Counsel? Yeah, I have some questions. Maybe they're a little bit more for the solicitor than for Myra, but in terms of the, your bylaws, is our permission even needed to make this change that you're talking about? Is it, is it baked into the bylaws?
Okay. That's a really good question, and, and I'm glad you asked it, because yes, one of the things in the bylaws that will continue to exist is we can't make changes in the current situation where it's a board member that's being appointed, or if we change the bylaws and it's an advisor being appointed, that's something that you all would have to say, oh, never mind, we don't care about that anymore. We want the relationship. We want your ideas, your recommendations. We, you know, we are, we are, we continue to be open and want to be a part of the community, and you all obviously are a really important part of that.
Yeah, and I think the other question is, Mike, from, you know, legal, can you walk us through what major difference there would really be if we made that change, or?
Well, let me begin by saying it's a little bit unusual to have public officials on a private board. That, that's just, and I understand why it was set up that way in the beginning. I think the most important thing, and what we shouldn't lose sight of, is the idea of having input, the idea of communications going back and forth. So if there's more of a liaison person that doesn't serve as an actual legal director of the board, I can't imagine that your goals would change in, in any way. But it's a policy decision for all of you. You have the right to keep the position there. You have the right not to agree to this change, or, or you can.
Another question for Myra. Do you guys ever have any issues like making quorums or anything like that because of these three positions, or?
The theory is that we could have a quorum issue. I don't recall a quorum issue because of this.
Okay.
Especially in January. January, when it's challenging to.
So to be voting, a voting member, you use financial dues? It sounds like there's a financial commitment, and there's probably a commitment to a series of meetings, otherwise, if you're not showing up for those meetings, I can't imagine you'd be a very good member. You would want them, if they're not appearing. And also, it seems like there's a grant component to this, so having a unanimous vote seems to be very important as well. So I'm your liaison, as well with Mary. We both share the liaison piece, and I'll just be frank with you. I'm, I'm okay being an advisor to come to your annual meeting. I'm sure Mary as well. I don't want to speak for her, she's not here, but I'm sure she would be. And giving, it's still having the, I guess, the opportunity to give our input on that without having to fulfill all these other roles of having to attend all the meetings, having to commit to a financial obligation to be a part of it as liaison. So that's how I'm looking at it. I, I think it's, it, the advisory position seems to be okay to me. I don't know what my colleagues think, but it seems, seems to be all right.
How many, excuse me, how many members on the board?
So there can be 21.
Okay, so you should not really have a problem with the quorum then.
How many members are there currently? If I may?
There's 21.
Thank you.
Up to, up to 21, 21, including the three advisors.
Thank you.
Okay, and when you say the three advisors, one?
Three positions from, from other organizations.
Right, which would be one from the Town Council. Am I correct in that? Okay. And I understand the logistics of having to be present, dues, all of that. However, is there a possibility of having somebody as an ex officio member? Mike, can you answer that one, please?
Yeah, of course. It could be ex officio members. I mean, if we change the bylaws to allow for ex officio members.
And that doesn't affect the financial, being part of a financial?
But if I may on that one?
Specify that ex officio members do not have to make financial commitments.
Right.
Financial, okay.
And also avoids, you know, weighing in on decisions when you apply for, for, let's say, grants or whatever, you know, saying, are all members active and so forth? But if it's stipulated that's an ex officio, you know, that doesn't have to follow exactly the same? You know, I'm not sure.
Don't, you know, I don't, I guess I would need a dictionary to know what the difference between an advisor and an ex.
We've got a legal dictionary right here. Mike, would you?
I don't know. I don't know what to say.
Ex officio members usually have the right to vote.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Any other distinctive differences, Mike? Mike, could you make any other distinctive differences on that?
Yeah, so they have the right to vote. They don't count for quorums. Doesn't sound like that's really a problem.
Right.
And, you know, it's one vote really, or the three, I guess you're referring to. Those three votes count today. They would count tomorrow if you changed into ex officio members. So they would actually have the ability to, to vote yea or nay on various items that came up, as opposed to if they became advisors. Obviously, they would hopefully listen, but they would not be the legal authority to actually cast a vote.
Perfect.
So that still, Mike, doesn't get us into that gray area of sitting on a financial board as a public official? I mean, we're kind of, because it seems like if I'm voting at their financial, I feel like I'm slipping into that position, and then, I don't know, I just.
And Tim, it's a good question. I think the only way we clarify that is to make the bylaws clear what duties that ex officios have and do not have, and one of them would be financial commitment would not be necessary, especially since they come from public bodies, whether it's Historic District, the council, et cetera.
Well, if I could just interrupt.
If you.
My name is Linda DuBois. I'm president of the Friends of Linden Place. Myra was the head of the, of the committee that looked into bylaw. I've been the president for 20 years. I have never seen a Town Council representative at, at one of our meetings in 20 years. Also on the bylaws, there is a, that if you don't attend, I think it's two-thirds of, two-thirds of the, of the meetings that we can vote for, for a board member to not be a board member. That's politically not kosher.
Yeah.
Not that we would ever want to do that. So our, our real genesis of this change is to keep the advisory, the end of the phone call, hey, we need you at the meeting because of this, or this is what we're going to do, and it interfaces with the town. We would still have that, but unless, unless one of your Town Council members wanted to come to our meetings once a month, contribute as a board member is expected to do, work on the committee structure that we have, as do the Art Museum and, and the Historical Society representative, or did, then it really doesn't make sense, quite frankly, in an era where we're financially independent of the town to have an active voting board member on our, our board. It just, it just doesn't make, doesn't make sense. Have an advisor when our issues interface with the town and we need expertise that you all provide in the town. I know our, our advisor is only a phone call away. Actually, technically, all of you are a phone call away because, because we're all voting, voting members, and I did vote, by the way. So we are just trying to clean up our business as, as we go forward, and if your council wants to have a voting member ex officio or, or vote, it would probably be ex officio if we do that, and wants to be active and wants to sit on committees and wants to spend their time at the Linden Place, that's great. We're just looking for a way that we can sustain the relationship without compromising the requirements, and I think an advisor does that, not quite the ex officio, because that implies a more, does it not, a more active participation in the, in the board, and, and that's what we're trying to do.
Another question, Mr. Chairman. So if we, if we did go down the route where we actually created the advisory position, at some later point, we could change that decision to an ex officio if we wanted to, right?
No.
Could you, I'm going to let the solicitor answer that one, please. Thank you. She may totally agree with you, so.
I want to understand the question. If we created the ex officio position, no.
No, no.
If you, if the, I, I believe what I heard the councilmen say is if the advisor position was created, could you go the other direction toward a ex officio at some point in the future?
Well, it, it would, you would have to have a bylaw change.
Right.
And you would need, what does it take? A majority or three-fourths? I don't know what you require.
It would, it would require our board to make that decision. I would also, I just.
Wouldn't be guaranteed, is the answer.
Right.
Okay.
I, I would also like the board to be aware that both of the other organizations have chosen to go the, the advisor route for exactly the reasons that we've discussed. You know, as members of other organizations, I think all of us would hope that they would be committed to those organizations, both financially and with the gift of time, and so it, it made sense to them that, and so that's already happened.
So a couple of things for me. One is you'd mentioned about a councilperson not being there in 20 years. This is, yes, so these are not fist in the air as a, but I don't know if a council member has ever been, do, do you share the meeting schedule with the liaison from the council? Because I certainly didn't know when your meetings were.
It's a board member, it is a council member appointed to our board.
Same, so that's the same person in this instance? So what I mean by that is both Tim and Mary are liaisons to your board, so.
I never knew Ms. Porella was, I never knew Ms. Porella was a liaison to our.
Gotcha. So I bring that point up because I don't want it to be looked at as the, the both liaisons chose not to participate. I don't know if they knew that, that's.
If I, if I.
No, let me just finish, and certainly, and.
Do not call them liaisons, because that's what we're trying to get.
Okay, let me finish. They are liaisons. They are liaisons, and if you look at, at the, the council steps, they are liaisons. They may also be board members. That is okay, but they are liaisons. I appoint them as the chair, so that is a fact. But I don't want to take it, I, I didn't mean to be that place. I want to, to know, and I want the public to know, that both Tim and Mary didn't show up, because I don't think they knew the meetings were actually happening. Obviously, they know meetings happen, but not a particular one. So wasn't it a choice that they said, I don't want to be there, I don't want to participate, nor did you say that, but.
No, I didn't. That's correct.
I agree with you. You did not say that, but it's, what I want to be clear to say that they did not make a choice not to go to an invited meeting either. So I think there, there's a lack of communication that's important. Something else that came to mind with all of this is that the council position is a particularly different one, because it represents the funds from the people of Bristol that were put into Linden Place. You're absolutely right. You and people before you have done an outstanding job there. There's no question, and you deserve praise for it. But it got there by taxpayer funds, a part of it. And I think that's an important part to remember. That is a different position than everybody else, so. And it would not have happened, at least I think so, maybe it would have happened some other way, but it was a significant part of its success. You've taken that part and really run with it, obviously. It's a beautiful place. It continues to be beautiful, so. So those are the things that come to mind. I don't think, and Tim, you certainly, please weigh in particularly on this, but I don't know how important it is for the town to have a voting position. You make some great points on it, but I really wanted to make that for the record, is that it isn't, what happened, the the town, and particularly the council member, represents those funds that were, and whether it was years ago or it was last month, it doesn't matter, right? It was still taxpayer dollars. So it's important that we have that representation. How that representation happens, I don't personally, I don't know if it's necessary to have a a voting position on the board. What's your thoughts?
I don't, I I agree with you. I'm chairman, I'm I'm fine with the advisory. I I think, I, you know, otherwise, if we go the other way, it's quite a commitment.
Yeah.
As far as meetings and meeting those obligations. And I'll be honest with you, colleagues, I don't know if, in my capacity, if I could take take it on in addition to everything else I have in my my life.
You have other things going on?
Well, how how often you guys have meetings? I imagine monthly, regular meetings, and not not every one of them touches on issues of the town, right? There there's probably a lot of other things that you guys are engaging in.
But board members are expected to go to monthly meetings and work on a committee.
Seems reasonable.
And and the committee board could be a couple of times a month, depending, like, Myra is a board member, and she she led this spearheaded the 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 bylaws, Jim, and has six or seven meetings. So it it's a it's a working board.
Tony, yes, I'm trying to understand the, what's in red here is striking out, okay? But then the, I mean, the black that's underlined, is that what's being proposed?
You're correct. You you are correct, councilman.
Okay. But on the bottom, the very last line says, these advisors shall serve as advisors to the members of the board or directors and have voting rights of the members of the corporation, except where stipulated in these bylaws.
You a huge apology, because that's an old, partially updated set of bylaws. The original bylaws called them directors consistently through it, and I thought that was also presented to you all. I apologize, so.
Would you, do you, do you have the correct verbiage?
The, yeah.
Would you read it?
Happy to do so.
Thank you.
When in doubt, go to the actuals. Sorry to hold you up here. So this is the original language. In addition to the directors elected as stipulated in these bylaws, three additional directors may be selected. One director each by the following, by the following, the town council of the town of Bristol, the president of the Board of Directors of Bristol Art Museum, and the president of the Bristol Historical and Preservation Society. These directors shall serve at the direction of the appointing authority, you all, and their rights to serve shall not be terminated by any of these groups without a concurrent and supporting vote by the body involved, provided, however, that said body remains in existence. These directors shall serve as full voting members of the Board of Directors, except where it's stipulated in the bylaws.
Okay, okay, so, yes, so that, yes, that being said, okay, so the the black down the line is what's being proposed, except, obviously, the voting piece, am I correct? So if we were to strike that last sentence there, these advisors shall serve as advisors to the members of the board, okay, and have voting rights, okay, of the members of the corporation, except about striking that piece off.
So the the updated is all about advisors and it's consistent. And so that's why that entire Article Three was was taken out and replaced for consistency. And I so apologize that the, what you're looking at is a half finished piece of our of our project. What I just read you was the correct original.
Right, which is what we having read here.
What is there, so may I have clarity or no clarity? What is the proposed change? What is the?
So the proposed, would you like me to read?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the advisors to the Board of Directors, in addition to the directors, the advisors to the Board of Directors is simply the title. In addition to the directors elected as stipulated by these bylaws, three additional advisors may be selected, one advisor each, by the following. The town council of the town of Bristol, the president of the Board of Directors of the Bristol Art Museum, and the president of the Bristol Historical and Preservation Society. These advisors shall serve at the discretion of the appointing authority, you all, and their rights to serve shall not be terminated for any of these groups without a concurrent and supporting vote of the body involved, provided that that said body remain in existence. These advisors shall serve as advisors to the members of the Board of Directors and have voting rights of the members of the corporation, except where stipulated in these bylaws. So in other words, if they are not members of the organization, they're not, they're not going to be able to vote, but they don't need to show up, they don't need to be contributing to committees, they don't, you know, so so the ongoing responsibilities of the Board of Directors would no longer be presumed by the by these advisors.
If if I may, the confusion is the difference between a member and a director.
And the director.
So a member is the big body.
Yeah.
And the director is the small group at the top. So that's, I think that's where the confusion is. So I I think the language is appropriate and fine as it reads.
You get a free membership on it, by the way.
I'm ready to vote.
We'll keep, we'll keep on this, you know, humor. We'll keep you and as voting members, if you give us a line item in the budget.
I thought we were keeping your humorous. Yeah, I do. So, council.
Yeah.
Are are you clear on what's being proposed? That that discussion helped me, I know.
I just, sorry.
It it does, okay, because I was just trying to understand, wrap my head, if we, if it was being proposed that we would no longer have a representation on the board, but that's not the case at all. You know, and I I'm fully aware now, you know, and understood.
Oh, good.
I'm good.
Is there any other discussion from the council?
Mr. Chairman, I'm I'm ready to make a motion to accept the bylaws to to make the liaison, Mary and myself currently as advisors. I was just wondering, Mike, could you help me with the motion, or what that would, what that would be?
You as a body would have to prove, approve the amendments to the bylaws.
Just approve.
The motion would be to approve the amendment to the bylaws as presented.
So moved.
Second, discussion, please.
So just to, just to be clear, the bylaws will, after this takes place, we will, at our annual meeting, be presenting the bylaws to the board and the members present to say, to ask for a vote, and they will, the change will take place January one.
So you have, potentially in a moment, you have our agreement, and then you have your body vote on it. And then it's, it it makes those changes at that point, sure.
So is it possible that they may not accept it?
I think anything is possible, councilman. I think it's unlikely.
Any other discussion from the council?
Just if there's any meetings that the advisor needs to be at. If Mary and myself could get a calendar invite specifically for those meetings, so we can have that on the calendar, that way we can plan around. Make sure we're there. Just just moving forward, it's cleaner and easier. Thank you.
Madam clerk.
I I would just recommend that after the bylaws have been accepted or denied, if you could just give us some type of notification or the final copy so the council has it, we can put it on the consent agenda, so you know that it's passed.
Good point.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion. We appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G one, is the Board of Tenant Affairs. For one, two year, two year unexpired term, six expire January twenty twenty five. We have two persons with interest. We have Arthur Maderas of Ten Forty Team Oak Street, interested in appointment, and Donna Falco also with interest in appointment.
I make a motion that we appoint Dr. Maderas.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, to appoint Arthur Maderas. Any discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G two. This is the Bristol Housing Authority. This is for one, five year unexpired term, set to expire January twenty twenty seven. We have Donna Falco, who is a tenant with interest in appointment, and we also have a David Raposa with interest in appointment.
So the next step, if unless there's council objection, we can set up interviews? In in regards to, I feel bad for Donna because of what just happened, and it's nothing against Donna in what's in any way, shape or form. I spoke with the clerk today and yesterday, and you did some homework with the solicitor in regards to what is an acceptable member, and Donna can be an acceptable member. She is currently a tenant there. And the the requirement as a tenant, we have one right now, is that they must have they must have a, an election. So the people need to raise their hand and say, I'm interested in doing it. There has to be a meeting there, and then they propose the candidate to this council. So if we wanted to go that direction, and it's absolutely possible that we can, that did happen with the current member who's a tenant. It would need to happen again if Donna or anybody else was interested as a resident. That's something that we need to consider here. So if we want to inter, excuse me, interview both candidates, we can certainly do that. We can set it up at the next meeting if everybody's available to do so. Why don't we, why don't we interview both, just so we have options and opportunities there? Is everybody okay with that?
That sounds great. All right.
I don't know if they have to advertise for that within the.
Not with us, with them, right?
Community.
Right, with their community.
See if there's another applicant that would like to be considered.
So that, and we agree, so I know that there would be a lot of steps for anyone, including Donna, it's not Donna. Anyone that is a tenant needs to go through before we could consider them. It seems that she's expressed interest in both, and I thought it would be an important opportunity for us to interview her. And if another opportunity presents itself, we would have her interviewed already if she's amenable to that, so.
And Chairman, we'd be interviewing at the November twentieth.
If everybody's okay with that, we could set it up for six thirty?
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
We have an H D C as well, so I don't know if we want to.
H D C.
Member. An H D C possible, possible interview.
Everybody okay with six fifteen?
Yeah, fuck it, six fifteen.
All right. So could we have a motion to that effect that we'll set up interviews?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, to set up interviews on our next meeting at six fifteen, including the two interested applicants and potentially the H D C. Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G three. This is Rogers Free Library Board of Trustees. This is for one, three year unexpired term, set to expire January twenty twenty seven. And this is Al Wobelowski, Twenty Four Burton Street. This is with a letter of resignation.
I mean, that we accept a letter of resignation with regret and thanks for all the years of service and advertise.
Second, motion made by Tony, as stated, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? I'll take a quick moment and and just reiterate, I thought Al did an outstanding job, and he'll be missed, so. Any other discussion?
Well said, yeah.
Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G four. This is the Historic District Commission. This is for one, three year unexpired auxiliary member, position set to expire July twenty twenty seven. And there's also one, three year unexpired second auxiliary member, position set to expire July twenty twenty five. And we have William Robert Page with interest in appointment.
Motion to set up an interview with Robert Williams Page for the November twentieth meeting.
To a second?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron, as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And this is me saying thank you, on behalf of this council and the town, for everybody that puts their name out, and and that last one sounds very familiar from an earlier conversation, so it seems like that family is very involved in the town, ages as I speak of, so. To them and everybody else, this council says thank you. We appreciate the time. And Bristol is what it is today because of the volunteerism. Thank you.
Yeah, you're right. Our family's active.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H one. This is Town Clerk Hidero, and this is for clarification on the Sunday dancing and entertainment licenses and Sunday operating hours for establishments.
Madam clerk.
Thank you. And so if the council remembers, in the council meeting of September, I think it was eighteenth, September eighteenth, there was discussion about Sunday dancing and entertainment licenses and a little confusion about how the Sunday entertainment process works. I did speak with the Solicitor's Office. We did review the ordinance and state statute, and there is no distinction that we can find between entertainment licenses on Sundays and the other six days of the week. So I did have a discussion with the chairman and the Solicitor's Office. The council did ask that I send a letter to the establishments clarifying the Sunday process. And the best that idea that we came up with is to reissue the establishments licenses, noting the dates and times that they were approved for according to their application and also according to the town ordinances. So that way it gives them a clear understanding of what is allowed under that license. The only thing that I would ask from the council is that in June of twenty three, the council passed a motion to change the establishment entertainment on Fridays and Saturdays that occurred outdoors to end by eleven P M. and not midnight, as it currently states in the ordinance. So I would just recommend an ordinance be added to clearly state that, so that way the establishments do understand what that Friday, Saturday outdoor entertainment is, and we can clearly list it on their license, so that way it's clear for everybody.
If the council agrees, we can refer to the solicitor to amend that ordinance accordingly.
And will that include also the clarification for Sunday?
So and then that would be up to the council, whether or not they want to change any type of or put any type of restriction on any type of Sunday entertainment license, as it currently stands, they have until, let me just double check, I believe it's ten P M. Sundays. Wait for it. Ten P M.
So the question was, you can go, well, the answer was ten o'clock on Sundays.
So Friday and, just for point of clarification, if I may, so Fridays and Saturdays, it's eleven.
Outdoor.
Outdoor.
It's midnight. So indoor establishment has music and play music indoors until twelve midnight.
And Sundays is ten.
Until ten.
Right, but indoors is twelve right across the board. For all three of them, for Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
No.
Nope. Friday, Friday and Saturday indoors is twelve.
Right.
Out and indoor on Sunday is ten P M.
Got you.
Friday and Saturday, outdoor is.
Eleven.
Eleven. And then Sunday outdoors still.
And, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What do we need for a motion? I'm not aware.
To refer to the solicitor to make those changes to coincide with the council's motion from when, Madam clerk?
That was June twenty twenty three.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
It's a nice way of wording that, Tim. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I really think Mary would have liked to be here, don't you think?
Yes.
For this one.
Oh, yes.
We'll take a moment.
I'm sure she's watching.
I'm sure she is.
Yeah. I haven't gotten a call, have you?
With. Right. Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I1, this is Town Administrator Contente, and this is in regards to proposed amendments to Chapter 11, fees and charges, and Chapter 16, parking violation schedule of the town code, and this is for modifications to parking fines, violations and penalties.
Mr. Administrator?
Hey, so you're to be, I'm going to be the bad guy here.
No.
It's been many, many decades since our parking fines have increased. We're still at $10 in general for most of our violations, $10. So we looked at what our neighboring communities, their warrant is about 20, and Flutsmith is 30, so we're recommending that the the base is $30 going forward. There's a couple of that are a little bit higher, up to 50, and that's the crosswalk and the fire hydrant. So other than that, I think it's time, you know, I think it just sends a message that we're not taking parking enforcement serious when you're only, you have a $10 fine. That's those are our recommendations.
I I couldn't agree anymore with you, so you're not the bad guy. You know, I'm right in the in your corner with this, seriously, over time, you know, the coupons were very cheap.
So it's supposed to be a deterrent.
I was surprised to see that. $10.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if this council agrees with these changes, we're going to refer to the solicitor for an amended ordinance? Is that? Modifications?
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you know, they can't vote on it tonight, but why don't you refer it, and we'll have something ready for you November 20th, whether it's on the ordinance or the schedule of fees, one or the other.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, discussion?
It's in line.
Outside, so we'll refer for an ordinance. Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is you, Mike.
The motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to条文 laws 42465A2 concerning litigation, else, Doc.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, discussion? I do.